It's 6:01 and David doesn't trust me with the dabble anymore. So I'm using this bottle to call the meeting to order.
I asked him not to.
It's added. First order on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, to call meeting to order and have a pledge allegiance. Stupid record again.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, or which stands one nation, under God, in his soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve.
It's been moved in second. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the agenda is accepted. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move the approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Okay. We're moving on to Mallory.
Well, this weekend we had Skills USA and we had the debate, the district debate tournament. And we had a lot of people going state either for placing first or second in their events or automatically qualified. So I'm going to read the list of names. For public forum debate, first placement Ivy Potter and Wave Popper. And second placement to Dax Johnson and Tyrion McCoy. So they are going to state. The automatic qualifiers for state and congressional debate for Charlie Hatch and Eduardo Cabazul. Speaking, first place for poetry went to IA Coffee for Boo. Informative speaking, first place went to Alicia Pogo. Impromptu speaking, first place went to Dax Johnson, second to Ella Croson. In persuasive speaking, second placement to IA Coffee for Boo. Automatic qualifiers for state and speaking for program oral interpretation speaking went to Eliza Herman. Prose reading went to Ren Stewart and Nick Earp. And after dinner speaking went to Ivy Potter. And for acting, first place for dramatic interpretation acting went to Ty Belzer. Humorous interpretation acting, Ella Croson got second. And automatic qualifier for state in dual interpretive acting for Ty Belzer and Sam Twink. So 14 students are going to state and for speech and debate in their respective events. That's really good. And then for skills USA, we have kids go for manufacturing welding, health sciences culinary and broadcasting journalism. Broadcasting journals. And first place for audio production went to Elliot Ailey and Jesse Frickel. And they are state champions and eligible to compete at nationals. And so this is for states, so people who were eligible to nationals will have gotten first. And second was Austin Taylor and Justin Moen. For cabinet making Avery Ball Follamere got third. For carpentry Eli Johns got second. For CNC two axis turning programmer Dakota Blair got first. She's eligible for nationals. For CNC five axis milling programmer Alex Brous got first and is eligible to compete at nationals. First aid CPR, second went to Fay Sawyer, fifth went to Felix Bishop, sixth went to Jacob Gibson. For general welding, so stick, wire flux, off-axi, he's cutting and TIG, second went to Hoyt Terry and third went to Glenn Crook. For medical terminology, so that would be just understanding medical words, basically spelling bee, second went to Felix Bishop. And related technical math, first went to Glenn Crook. He'll be eligible to complete at nationals. And sixth went to Alice Brous. For welding sculpture, third went to Eli Belzer. And the state only events do not go to nationals. Here there's flux core arc welding, second went to Hunter Baker. Fourth to Dallas McCott Market and novice CAD, second to Donald Bryce. So we had a very, very, very good weekend for the Pirates.
Yeah.
Both things. And so our boys basketball, of course, achieved second in state, which even though they were disappointed, still very good achievement. Dance achieved third in state for their Palm Routine. Choir districts was last week. They finished with a score of 79, which means they just missed auto qualification for state. However, nobody else from our district auto qualified, so we still have a chance at state. This Wednesday band has districts at 9:30 a.m. the auditorium. Spring sports, boys golf was second in the big tournament last week. Girls golf has started off well with their four girls, which is unfortunately, I don't think, it's not a team, which is the first time in a while we haven't had a team. But hopefully we'll be able to find more girls to go out for golf. This Saturday, the 19th is the pre-Conting track meet and the accused county is, track meet is on May 3rd. If you wish to come see those, the tennis team has done well and we have around 40 kids that came out to tennis, which is a record. A lot of people, I can attest. But it's been good. The atmosphere is good and we've done really well in past matches. Basketball, not basketball, what's baseball had a slow start, but after, but after the last week and a half, they won three state games. And one of which they came back from behind. It was the bottom of the seventh. They were down 2 to 12. They just needed to score 11 straight runs and win 13 to 12. So good job them. They did not let that stop them. Softball is top 12 in state and ranked highest in league. Both baseball and softball start week. Okay, so we've, for events that are happening in this month, poetry slam is this Thursday at 5:30 in the auditorium. Earth League is next week and seventh graders are going to plant a moon tree, which from what I've heard is basically a seed that was in space. Which is interesting. That's all I know about it. And we're also having a shoe drive where we collect shoes and we recycle them. So we just drop our shoes off at the door. So we're doing that next week. And and we have fine arts assembly, May 1st. And Peter Pan musical opens on Friday, May 2nd at the Drama Lab. Prom is May 3rd and the theme is Night in Emerald City. So Wizard of Oz should be fun. Chess club is growing with junior high students participating as well. One boy went to state, went to the state competitions this weekend, but we don't know the results of that yet. So I'll be telling you next month. And esports with Coach Peters has 70, seven to eight kids participating. Latin X is attending a Caesar Chavez conference. And Black Student Union, Union and Gray, Gay, Black Student Union and Gray. Black Student Union and Gay Straight Alliance, GSA, are going to the Mill Casino for a diversity conference. And Z Code is finalizing for their yearly community 101 grant, which is basically they get a lot of money and they can choose which organization in the community they put it towards. Like the dog shelter or things like that. And so they're finalizing the decision on that. So that's all the recent events that have happened.
Thank you. Is that the ball?
We have a upcoming field trip with our Watership program and the North End British program as well. That's gonna be exciting. I don't know if they got paid for that. We also have a wild life safari field trip coming up soon. So we're taking the whole school there. Not sure that's gonna be weird. We also have a new.
I don't know where it's coming from.
I love this.
I know what it is, but I don't know where it is.
Is one of the people in the meeting, is there, is the volume?
Oh, you know what?
Mama.
Oh, no, he's muted. That's what I thought. I was trying to bring it up, but I don't see it. Okay, I'll work on this in the background. Sorry about that. Never do a moment.
It was for you, Cody. Go ahead.
We had our robotics class that started last quarter. So we have about 13 students attending it. It seems really good. I've been there myself. They're both teenagers right now, which is pretty cool. I may be able to present it next month. We also have our new writing seminar class, which I've been told is an AP seminar class. I'm not too sure on it, but it's also pretty cool. We do a lot of writing and we also like to do storytelling there and also talk about each other's, what are you writing and stuff like that. And that's all I have.
That sounds very interesting, the writing class. Are, are kids enjoying having to write more?
Yeah.
They like being able to share what they think and stories and stuff like that.
It's a good skill to have. You'll find that it's one of the best skills you'll use as you go through life. Are there any questions?
Do you know who's running the robotics class? Ron.
And did you guys, didn't you guys take a trip to the aquarium and then also walk down to the Kupin library? How were those trips?
They were pretty good. We had a lot of kids sent up for library.
Any questions? No, thank you, guys.
Beck, did you have any audio on here I should be aware of?
Using a USB camera this time?
One down.
Sounds fun. Okay, wait. Oh, this is so fancy. Is there a mouse? Oh, yeah.
You're coming up.
Oh, I didn't even know. I was still in that. Okay. Hello, everyone. Nice to see you. All right. See if I know what I'm doing. Has to be down on the arrow.
No, it shouldn't have to be down on the arrow. There, I'll click. You just click and I'll hear it.
Oh, okay. All right. So I have lots going on for member spotlight of the month. The whole Sunset fifth grade team was nominated. Actually, kind of they trickled in and then finally I'm like, isn't this the whole team? So I'm gonna read to you about the catalyst stuff they're doing. They have quite a few after school club opportunities this year that they've started. So for starters, Mr. Lyon, one of the, Chris Lyon, one of the teachers there, applied for a grant through the Kuzbe Foundation and received $5,000 for the after school programs. So Mr. Lyon is running the Lego and robotics club and then Mr. Brandon Rodriguez, another teacher, is doing Dungeons and Dragons Club. These programs offer an engaging learning experience for 24 students ranging from fourth to sixth grade. Fostering critical thinking, collaboration and creativity. On Mondays, students participate in Lego engineers where they work in teams to construct elaborate Lego sets, developing teamwork and problem solving skills. Wednesdays, Mr. Rodriguez does Dungeons and Dragons, collaborate, where they improve collaborative storytelling. That encourage and encourage imaginative problem solving and narrative development. Additionally, the robotics program utilizes Lego robots to achieve specific goals and missions, blending hands-on building with practical application of engineering principles. This comprehensive program provides students with diverse opportunities to explore their interests, enhance their skills. And develop a passion for learning in a fun and supportive environment. We strive to reflect, learn and grow. So that's the robotics and Dungeons and Dragons options. Ms. Frangopoulos, another teacher, Jen Marie Frangopoulos, is running the mural restoration and scavenger hunt club weekly after school as well. She does it once a week. The, she was originally involved in the mural and then it got damaged and so they're working on it again and building on it, I believe. The mural depicts local flora and fauna as well as incorporates some of our key five science standards. The scavenger hunt portion will be made available online and there will be a printed brochure that can be distributed around town. So I look forward to seeing that. This is, yeah, that's it. They also have recently started a self-manager system to reward those kids that are doing, making good choices. So students must apply to be self-managers and get signatures from several staff members indicating that they have demonstrated responsible behavior. If selected, they get a self-manager badge and the privilege of helping with school-wide activities. Additionally, they're allowed the following benefits such as no need for a hall pass if they have a badge on. Special events like they're trying to do an extra recess for them monthly and special lunches like with teachers and such. And classroom privileges designated by the teachers. Often they get to be the first in the line, maybe leave a couple of minutes early to go to lunch, things like that. And there's a picture there. I forgot to highlight the pictures.
Oh.
Thanks. Of the fifth grade self-managers collecting money during their penny wars, which raised over $600 for a local focus animal foster agency. I think it's one of their first projects. So that is the great things that are happening at Sunset. All right, some committee work. I think I mentioned this last month, but we have four delegates heading to OEARA this coming weekend. It's their annual rep assembly where there's like 600 people voting on new business ideas and stuff. So it's, it's a really exciting weekend. It's, it's great to see the Democratic faction in person. And I look forward to it every year. Bargaining, as you know, we, we kicked off on 4/7. We have another couple of dates, 4/21 coming next Monday and then two weeks later on May 5th. We also recently got our, a committee, our PAC committee, which is Political Action Committee, which is very separate from our just CDEA membership. Due to dollars is not used for political action. But we do have some members that are also contribute to the PAC fund and are eligible to get involved when we get together. We don't do that very often, but because we don't have a huge following and we just don't have enough hands to, to get real involved there. But we do get involved when there is a opposition running against for the school board. And so we did get our team together and we interviewed Ernie Roblin and Chris Castleman. And I'm happy to announce that we are endorsing Ernie Roblin. Thank you. Thank you, Ernie. And last, well, I'm going to be sending an email invitation here shortly. As we do every year on Honor of Teacher Appreciation Day, which we seem to celebrate all week. We are gonna have our education celebration. It will be at Heritage Hall as it has been for the last few years. It will be on Wednesday, May 7th, starts at 4 o'clock. We, we will recognize our probationary graduates, any retirees. I haven't heard who's on our retiree list yet. As well as we're currently starting to take nominations for members going the extra mile, nominated by their peers. And so we'll announce those at the education celebration as well. And I hope at least some of you will join us. Okay. Any questions?
Any questions? Anything, Diane, in there? Nope, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, Bree announced she will not be here today. She's at home with her family dealing with the. So Marina.
Hello. David's gonna pull up my worksheets, right?
I am. I'm gonna start with enrollment.
That is wonderful. So before it comes up, enrollment is down as projected. We are down 12 from March. These are purely ABM, so it's the actual bodies enrolled at that day. It doesn't factor in the weights or any of the the additional weights that are kind of towards the state school fund. So it's not a one for one decrease in state school fund. But you can see that Madison went down from 279 to 277. Eastside did go up from 282 to 288. The Melacoma is down 4 to 468. Sunset is down 4 from 360 to 356. The junior high went down from 445 to 442. The high school actually had the smallest decrease of 1. We had a resource link increase of 1. Destinations went down by 2. And then AYA went down by 7. So we have a total enrollment decrease from 2994 to 2982, a decrease of 12. This is not uncommon for the last little couple months of the year. It's usually where we see the biggest change. But somewhere between the first and the second semester is our biggest. And then we see a trickle the rest of the year. So we are down 12 from March. We are down 41 from the prior year in April. That is significant. However, at this time last year, we were projecting to be down to, at the end of the year, down to 2950 and we ended at 2969. So my projection is again 2950 based on our fortune of how much we lose each month. I am anticipating it's ending the year at 2950. Obviously, that's not the hope, but I'm going for worst case scenario when we're looking at our upcoming biennium. And we'll probably continue to see a decrease throughout the rest of the year and being right around 2950. Does anyone have any questions on enrollment? Okay, we'll move on to the financials. Last month I did not present to you, so this month is a little little more in depth because I was able to do the first, second and third quarter of the fiscal year, which we don't typically get to until May. But I do now have a full accounting department and we are able to get some of this completed a lot faster than we've been able to last couple of fiscal years. So when looking at this, we are projected to be right on track with our state school fund. The unfavorable variance that you see all the way to the right-hand side of 289,000 is purely when the state school fund, May reconciliation comes out. By this time that I've done the March board presentation, I typically had that many adjustments, but because we're doing it earlier, it's still projecting with our current trends. I haven't been able to adjust for the May reconciliation, which is when we get the final calculation of the May 2024 fiscal year. And so usually we see an increase from that, but then we see a decrease from the current year. But typically in that May reconciliation, we also get our high cost disability expense payment. And so typically I'm able to offset that when I present to you the March presentation, but we're on track. We have in the budget to receive the 39 million and that's reset. Our estimates have not changed yet. We'll know in about two weeks when we give them a payment information. Local sources look great. That is things like suffering taxes, miscellaneous badge replacements. Anything that comes from local sources, miscellaneous sources, some insurance payments from when we've had insurance claims this year. Intermediate sources, you'll see has a unfavorable balance projected of 24,000. That's the county school fund. It fluctuates pretty much based on how much timber they sell each year and how many county taxes are received. So we estimate pretty low. When we get two payments, we get one in about November and one in about April. So we should know next month if we're on track, but I'm anticipating we'll be we'll be pretty neutrally favorable for this upcoming year. You'll see that the beginning fund balance is finalized now that we have a completed audit report. We projected 500,000 and we're pretty close with that, or I'm sorry, 5 million. We're pretty close to 5.44 million. And that's purely due to end of the year adjustments. So taxes hadn't been paid, things that we had been projecting to be paid at by June 30th, but were really paid after July 1. That's purely just a fiscal year cutoff. And then if you go down to expenditures, a little bit up, David. Thank you. So as our board, we budget by fund and major function. So these major functions are listed as instruction, support services. And then the other that we have budgeted is other expenses. So that would be things like transfers. We're not planning on doing all of our transfers because the bulk of that is for capital projects. But as we had approved in the supplemental budget, there was significantly higher than anticipated beginning fund balance. So we are not planning on doing a transfer this fiscal year. Instruction, we are looking right on track at 300,000 within our budget allocation, which is really great considering we budget person by person. So to be that close to instruction is really great. That's the equivalent of about three staff that maybe we were able to code somewhere else. And then support services, it's projecting that we're gonna be 85,000 over our budgeted allocation. We are not, but because of the way our end of the year projections look, we've been having a lot of expenses at the end of the year related to things like summer school that we haven't been able to budget for and bring up right away because we haven't had the grant allocation. So we, we spent a couple thousand dollars and we it's projected we're gonna be over, we're not. We've only spent about 13 million and we have budgeted almost 18 million. So we'll probably spend close to that 18 million, but we will not go over if we are looking in May or June that we're gonna get close to that. I'll present to you as an appropriation transfer, but I don't need to script that happening. We're, we're looking good. We're set to be on track for our estimated appropriated ending fund balance for the general fund. Can you go to the special revenues for me? The special revenues fund is all of our grants and miscellaneous things like student body and athletics are primarily paid out of here. And then what we call our in-house fund, about 299. Also child nutrition is all included in here. So we are looking pretty good, but you'll see that some of our revenue sources are expected to be unfavorable at the end of the year and some are expected to be significantly more favorable. That came down to things like grants that we weren't anticipating getting, but that we got and we want to spend. So things like Esther that we had this year, but also grants that we did not have, probably budgeted for, like the peak physical education expansion grant. They talked about bringing that back. We budgeted for an allocation, but then we didn't end up receiving it. We also just budgeted additional monies in this fund. We actually got I'm not sure if we'll get those, but as we get to May, we might get some information, hopefully. And so that's part of why the projections in this fund are so off. It's purely based on what grants we receive and we spend on that grant. So we can't go above our So we can't go above our budget allocations. If you scroll down to our requirements, we're looking great, except for that support services line where it's projecting that will be over by nine hundred thousand. We are not over our current allocation. That's just anticipating that we're going to have a ton of expenses right at the end of the year in June because of that summer school grant. I don't know if we will get that grant. If we do, I might have to come back to visit for the appropriation transfer to allow us to spend some of it. But at this time, I've not heard if they're even on a waitlist for summer school. Just some of those up in the air with the bargaining thing. And it might not be something we know until mid-June, but we need to schedule and get out right away. Other than that, the special revenue fund show looking great. So you can scroll to debt service, which is also looking right on track. And it's projecting that will be unfavorable by two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Those are just property taxes. And we build in a percentage and a ratio each month of what we anticipate receiving during the year. But that's just based on historical data. This true skinning property taxes are really hard to track when we're gonna get. We only get them on Thursdays. So right now, we've gotten through March. It looks on track, but they're estimating we might not receive that much in April, May, and June. If I come to you guys and let you know, we might need to do a transfer in there. But right now, we're looking great. Our allocations are looking great to pay our debt payments in May and June. That's our last two principal payments of the year. We have one more year of hers bond. So that's great. You'll see one more year of that in here. And then in future budgets, it'll just come down to that Geo bonus from twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Onto capital projects. So this is now the new capital projects, based on the supplemental budget we raised last in March, which thank you very much for doing, and has allowed us to move forward on quite quite a good deal of blossom gold. And we're actually hoping for the business office to be moved in by the beginning of May for our offices. So right in time for payroll and budget season, it'll be wonderful. And we're looking great on local sources. Those are things particularly interest because we had that higher than it's beginning fund balance. The interest goes to local sources. And so we just gonna include interest on a lot higher of an amount than we were anticipating. So that's why it's a little bit over what we expected. Right now, we're about ninety thousand over what we had budgeted for. But you'll see that our beginning fund balance, I budgeted at two point eight five five million. And in retrospect, we really had five point three million because of the extra transfers. So if you'll scroll down, these are the new supplemental budget numbers, based on the functions that you guys approved. So support services is now budgeted at one point one million. And facilities acquisition and construction is budgeted at one point three two million. We are right on track to spend those. We were a little cautious in our projections on what we could actually get done by June. But Loma, our new facilities director, has really made that happen. So we've had significant progress on Blossom. We are working on a plan to do phase one of the Sunset Roof, starting in July. We are also looking at, once we move out of Blossom, to allow Altide to expand and take over some of that building, do some paint, some touch-ups, some.
Even have a miller?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
They're all running to you after a while. So we're doing great in the sun. We're not anticipating to go over budget, but we're gonna spend the allocations that we had approved at the last meeting. It'll make facilities life significantly easier to not wait till July 1 to do all these projects. And if we have the allocation, we're utilizing it. So we have a lot of irons in the fire, but all of the projects seem to be going well and are under budget at this time. But Loma will give you more information on exactly all these facilities. And we might be able to get you more information on exactly what needs working on. Does anyone have any questions on capital project funds or any of the others?
David?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Just one broad question. Do we have any, any grant funds that are ARPA or potentially impacted by some of the changes? Do we have any money that we know that's unspent that could potentially be clawed back?
Not at this time, no. We spend our allocations religiously. And because if you don't send them, then they think you don't need them and reutilize them. But we do have some that moving forward are going to be questionable as to how much funding we do receive. Yeah.
And then the question I had is, so it sounds like we have one more year of the first bond.
Correct.
When that's expired, what is it, what's gonna happen to our, our purse costs? Do we have some clarity about what, when that bond goes away, what the additional impact will be on our budget?
We do. About six percent of an increase, which it looks like our percentage will be going from about twenty twenty-two on average to about twenty-eight percent on average for purse costs, not including pickup. However, that's kind of hitting exactly when our purse bond falls off. And so some of that cost is things we're already spending. We will just move them from purse UAL payments to essentially purse current payments. There is a house bill, I believe it's a house bill, that's currently under discussion right now that would potentially lower our percentage in all other impacted districts by about one point six percent. They're hoping that will go into effect on July 1, but we won't know until after budget. So we have to budget at the higher rate, but next year will be a significant purse cost.
Purse cost.
Mm-hmm, because of the bond and the increase rate.
Okay. And then I guess the third question I wanna ask is, you know, we talked a lot about sort of our priority maintenance on our buildings. And I know that Sunset Roof has been one of the ones that has been on the table a long time. You know, what is the total? What is the total projected cost and what it would take to be what's necessary with that roof at this point?
Those are two separate things. So yes, we have, we have an estimate on how much it would be to replace the entire roof in one straight shot. It's about two million dollars. We also have been, we tested some hatching system last year that has worked pretty well, according to our facilities department. It's filled a lot of the gaps. And they believe that we are able to, rather than set money aside and do it all in one fell swoop, they believe the architects and the facilities department have found a way to do it in a five-year phase, starting in the next fiscal year, where essentially all the money that we keep putting into a reserve, we're able to do it all in one fell swoop. We're gonna start doing about four hundred to five hundred thousand a year and actually having the work done at once, rather than it sitting aside and then the cost of the project increasing.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Any other question?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey. I think we are on to Dr. Ainsford.
As David is pulling this up, this is a, this is really a perfect segue from Mrs. Ed. She was talking about Skills USA, which is connected to career and technical education. So she teed things up for us. So thank you, Mrs. Ed. My superintendent's report today, the agenda, mission, board goals, current technical education is the main part of my presentation, as usual, and with timeline, good things, and then obviously some, some time for, for questions. So as we get into this, this topic, I wanna start again with our, with our mission and connect it directly to career and technical education. So we talked a lot about the three Es and making sure kids are enrolled, employed, enlisted. When you look at current technical education, it could be any one of those things, those three things. If you're, if you're a kid who's decided to be enrolled in a current technical education school, a two-year school, a one-year program, you're enrolled. If you're a student who has decided to use some of your work experience at school, you have a credential, which is portable for some of our students. They're in our, they're in our CT programs, and they go right, right into the workforce. And then the last one is enrolled. There are a percentage of kids who are excited about current technical education, and then they'll take those skills and they'll go, they'll go right into the military with those skills. So I wanna highlight our programs, our students, our instructors. And February was Career Technical Education Month, but I think the timing is, it also works with.
Clickers I'm working, but I don't wanna.
Just click early on. Perfect. You skipped that one. Go ahead, skip. All right, before we jump into this, just some, just foundational language that we can, we can all kind of center ourselves around. So the first one is pathways. You hear a lot about pathways in CTE. And just think about pathways is, it's, it's a group of courses that are related. So if I'm in culinary one, two, and three, that could be, that could be a pathway. If I'm in, if I'm in manufacturing, there's a pathway. If I'm in construction, if I'm in health science, if I'm in computer science, that's a pathway. Participants in our system, they've earned point five credits. Concentrators, they have earned two credits. And the key is sequence. They've earned those credits in sequence. So it's not randomized. It's I've taken, I've taken two welding courses in sequence. I've taken two computer science. I've taken two construction trades courses in sequence. Completers are three or more CT courses in sequence. And then last one is Carl Perkins Five. Carl's Perkins, Carl Perkins funding has been around, I think, since the seventies, early eighties, named after a legislator in Tennessee. And that's where we get our, our career technical education funding comes from the federal government. The great thing about Perkins funding is that it's bipartisan. It's, 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 it's usually something that both sides can rally behind and sit and agree on. What's that?
Today.
Today. That's true. Thank you for the disclaimer. More language clusters. There are sixteen career clusters. We, we can't pull off all sixteen national clusters. But the clusters that we have, so think about clusters kind of like the umbrella over the pathway. So for us, we have hospitality and tourism. Culinary would be under that. Manufacturing, so your welding, would be under manufacturing. Construction, construction trades, information technology, health sciences. Those are some of our, those are some of our clusters. You have to be really well-funded to have all sixteen CT clusters. I think there's very few. I think the Las Vegas Public School District has all sixteen clusters. They're kind of, when you look at CT nationally, Las Vegas Public Schools is kind of the gold standard. They really are amazing what they do with their CT programs. So benefits, what are the benefits of current technical education? There's a lot of them. I started with this. It really fits our mission, enrolled, employed, enlisted. Kids can go in any, any, any three of those paths. It's increased exposure. So really what you're trying to do with CTE as early as possible is give students exposure to it. It doesn't mean they're gonna fall in love with it, but you guys know as adults, sometimes there's a lot of value in saying, ah, I thought I was interested in nursing, but I don't, I don't think so. I thought I was interested in teaching or welding or computer science. I'm not. So you wanna give them early exposure, as much exposure as possible. As you guys know, it's real-world experience. So you're taking things that are theoretical, right? A lot of your traditional academic classes tend to be theoretical. And you're taking things and you're applying them. Credentials are portable, very similar to an AP class, a dual college enrollment class. You're earning credentials, and hopefully you can take those credentials into the workforce or to post-secondary, and then it helps kids with some post-secondary transition. We talk a lot about that junior, senior year. It's not that they have to have a definite picture of what they wanna do, but they're starting to form a picture of, an idea of what I wanna do. Well, you have to, to, to make that decision and for that decision to be informed, our students really need lots of micro experiences to have an informed decision. So it really helps kids in that post-secondary transition. And what I love about, what I love about CTE is, and this could be another conversation, but there, there was a point in public education where we veered too hard on college for all. Everybody needed to go to college. And we recognize that that, that was, that was, that was flawed, right? Not everybody needs to go to college. And I think we, the pendulum is swinging, swinging back. And it's, it's career technical education, and it's college, and it's the military. The key is, the kids make the choice. We don't make the choice. All of those are great options. The other thing that happened historically is that CTE, and we used to call, when most of us were kids, it was vocational education. And unfortunately, it was a lot of, well, those are the vocat kids, and those are the college-bound kids. And there was a separation that's happened. We're in a, I think we're in a great spot because we've integrated traditional college-bound courses with CT. There's a strong integration, and we're starting to see kids who are in a CT class, but they're also taking AP or they're taking an AP course and they're on fire about welding. So I, I feel like there's a better integration with CTE, with traditional academic. Hold on, go back, sorry. So just a little bit of data here. This is, one of the benefits is graduation rates with CTE. It doesn't matter where you're at, whether you're in Kuzbey, you're in Alaska, or you're in Pennsylvania. When I talk to my colleagues, students who are concentrators in CTE graduate at an extremely high clip. And typically, it's in the high nineties. And those are students who have taken, again, two CT courses in sequence, not random CTE. I've taken two computer science courses. Those kids, and that's broken down by ethnicity. If you look at the very first bar chart, all students in the state of Oregon, graduation rate was someone helping eighty-one point three, is that right? Okay, if you look at the students who are concentrators in the state of Oregon, is that ninety-five percent?
Yeah.
They graduated at ninety-five percent clip. So there's a significant difference. When kids dive into CT and they're on fire, it's a hook. We've, we've grabbed, and usually we can get them to the finish line. And more importantly, when graduating, they have a skill set and moves them into post-secondary transition. I'll, I'll put this in the board report. For us, a closer look, a little more granular, Kuzbey. This is longitudinal from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four. The, the blue bar is participants. So point five. The purple bar is concentrators. So two courses in sequence. And you can see over the years that our students who are participants and concentrators graduate at an extremely high rate. You'll notice in two thousand twenty-four, it's eighty percent. I don't know, I don't know what the reason is for that. It has dipped. So we have, we have to dig into that. Why, that number should not be declining. It should be kind of status quo in the high nineties or increasing over that. So we need to dig into that. I'm gonna emphasize this one. This is, this is a big deal to me. It's, CT is a pathway for college and career. It's, it's college and career. I've seen a lot of CT students, great in traditional CT, who decide to go to a four-year school. Conversely, I've seen kids who are, who think they're college-bound, and they go, you know what? I wanna weld. Awesome, we're gonna help you weld. It's an. It's not an or. It is an. And so we're trying to make sure all of our students have access to CTE and traditional academics. So our staff, I, I don't have our culinary teacher on there. She came in kind of the beginning of the year. We have manufacturing, broadcast communication, construction trades, that, culinary arts, and health sciences. So those are the, really are our six programs. We don't have the sixteen clusters. Here are some of our construction trades kids, a little remodel work in the West Gym they're doing. And then a building, I believe that's, that's at Pete Sussex Stadium. Manufacturing. You can see there's some, some students there coming back from Skills USA with, with their, their awards in, in Mr. Crook's shop. We've got some kids welding locked in. I don't know how many bays we have in there. I'm actually gonna go and do a tour of all of our CT programs here in the next couple of weeks. Culinary. More culinary, Skills USA, you can see there the label there. Badge, computer science. All, all of them are important. Computer science is an area I like to see us grow. If you look at the, the two industries that are growing the fastest, not just here, but nationally, it's computer science and it's, it's medical. So one of the things about Perkins funding is your, your CT programs have to match, match your local industry. So it has to be relevant to the industry in your community, in your state. So it has to be relevant to the industry in your community, in your state. It has to be aligned. So in Alaska, aviation is huge. So we had aviation programs. Welding is, welding is a big deal. Engineering is a big deal. So our programs have to be aligned to the local and state industry. Uh, we also have to do the same in our district to receive Perkins funding. I talked about Las Vegas, Las Vegas. Obviously tourism, casinos, right? Lots of hospitals. So they're, they're rich in those CT programs. Broadcast journalism. These are some of our health science students, students there at Skills USA. They got their uniforms on. And then for us, where are we going? So super excited. Have to give Mr. Ashton some credit. He approached us early in the year. He had developed a conversation with the Coast Guard. Um, um, folks out in Charleston, we will be one of only two Coast Guard ROTC programs on the West Coast. Kodiak has a program and Kuz Bay will have a program. So super excited. Obviously that's, that's relevant to our area, getting kids. And I'd say getting kids excited about the Coast Guard, but also getting kids excited about maybe going to the military. So I think that is, that's going to distinguish us locally uh, when people move into the area. Uh, I think that's going to be, that really is going to be a flagship program for us. I think other areas where we need to grow, similar to advanced placement and college credit is just more CT certs. How do we get kids more certs? In the end, that's, that's the end game, right? If I'm going to be a completer and I'm going to be a concentrator and I've put all that time in, we need to make sure those kids are getting those credentials. And I'll say this. If you've ever, this is why it bothers me when people say rigorous academics and they, they separate it from CT. Have you ever seen a kid take a welding certification or uh, construction trades or nursing or the medical terminology? Those are rigorous academics, right? And, and we need to, we need to rethink what rigorous academics are because they're, they're embedded and incorporated into CTE. We need to expand. More kids need those credentials. Those, those credentials allow kids to go to work right away.
Do we have relationships with the unions that like in the building trades can become apprentices and earn that certification? I mean.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would need to dig into what relationships we have. Um, one of the things that I need to find out is what apprenticeships are available. One of the challenges that you'll find with industry is they'll say, we want more kids, we want more kids. And we'll say, we got the kids. But you got to open up the apprenticeship. Right? We can't make the apprenticeship, but we can get the kids to you. There are some, there are some constraints because there's an age requirement.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, that's, that's an area that we need to.
For Perkins, those require for each of those programs to have their own boards made up of people in those.
In those fields.
So there is a definite group of people connected with each one of our programs.
Yeah.
That are here in the field.
But yeah, more apprenticeships would be great. Another area of growth is we need to, more of those experiences need to happen in middle school. They, doesn't mean they have to take the entire course, but they need to get experience. They need to see what's at the high school so they get excited about it and they can see themselves in those CT courses. And, and we're working on that. We have removed a lot of the barriers between Marshall High School and Marshall Junior High in terms of course access. We're really opening that up. So kids can take some of those CT courses, if there's room, of course. That, you know, the priority is going to be for those, for those high school kids, but when we can, when we can fit them in. And then I'm just going to end. This is, this is really important. I mean, CT is, it's college and career. I want to make sure and, and I'm, and I watch that closely because I've seen that, that can go quickly go, can go wrong when people start to misidentify kids. I do not want to go back to nineteen eighties vocational education. Okay. Before we jump into more questions, just uh, our, our spring timeline and I was listening to Becky uh, speak and I, I didn't put negotiations on here. That's what they say. Part of her spring was certified classified. April, we have state testing happening in our schools. May, we have AP testing happening at the high school. Uh, spring, lots of still, lots of movement here at Los of Gulch. Uh, getting this building ready so we can, so we can open up Milner Crest for alternative education. May, uh, May twenty-sixth is Memorial Day. It's, it's coming upon us fast. June twelfth is the last day of school. And then lots of capital projects this summer for our facilities. Good things. This is a group of the, group of kids who were at Skills USA. This is what Mrs. Ed talked about. These are the kids. I'm not going to go through all of them. She did that, but we recited state championships that were won. And Mr. Crook, I think, won three, three or four. Glenn Crook won three or four of those championships. So he is, he is one of our CTV stars. Lots of winning has happened.
Yep.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Just a period. But when you say point five, which is an experience, that's half a year.
Half a year. Correct.
Do we have any sort of program where the kids from the middle school come over like on one day and go in and look at all the classes? All the CTE classes and.
Yeah, I'm looking at. I'm looking at, at my cabinet team over here.
It, we have something close to that where the counselors go from the high school, go over to the schools and talk to them. Um, but then they can also sign up for some of the classes. So they're over there in close proximity.
But I mean, sometimes they don't even know if they want to sign up for it until they see all those. Like, yeah, I want to play with that.
We'll take more of that. And that's, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you, Justin. Okay. Um, Chad.
David, will you cue that theme music?
I have a tiger, right? Trying to get an angle where I can see and not turn my back to you. I'm here tonight to present the the twenty-five, twenty, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-seven integrated plan. And then at the end here, we'll, I'll ask you if we vote to approve the plan. This, we're on a two-year cycle. Um, this is our second go-around here for the integrated plan. And David, you're going to bring up my slideshow, correct?
Uh, yes.
What I put in front of you was um, the actual application packet. And what this is, is they give us a series of questions and so we can see those numbered questions. And then our responses to those questions. And so this slideshow, it's dual purpose. It's for us to talk through uh, the process tonight, but then it will get posted to the website for the public. And there's a place in the slideshow where the two documents that I put on in front of you. Um, there's links to those in there. And that's part of what we're supposed to do for this process.
Yeah, it's not letting me access your slideshow. Um, let me look if I can get a CDK twelve. Oh, wait. I think I got it. There we go.
Got it?
Yep.
We started collecting, I started collecting data for us um, in anticipation of this, starting last year. Um, by attending meetings and taking notes for items that are, are part of this application. And there's a, there's going to be a list in here what some of those are. For this year, then starting to formalize the process was Dr. Ainsworth, Worth's executive summary that he presented to you. And then also the school data presentation from all of our principals. And so here's the purpose again tonight. You know, I, I started talking about some of that. I gave you the background on the purpose, the planning team, they're listed on the next, one of these next slides here. And we'll see the plan inputs, the overview and what's next. And what, what we'll get into is a lot of our priorities through our needs assessment determine what we really wanted to focus on. And a lot of these things are either coming from the, the goals that you've set for us and what you hear from Dr. Ainsworth in every meeting because he's keeping us focused on, on, on the main things. And that's what that's saying here also. Um, part of this integrated plan was we, we get two big sets of funds. We get state grants and we get federal grants. And what the state did for us, um, about two thousand eighteen is they took these grants, we have to, we're supposed to go through a process like you're seeing here. Write a plan and then report back on these funds. And with all these state funds, um, to make it integrated, instead of writing a plan for this one and reporting and doing this several times, the integrated plan just simply integrates the plan. So we write one, um, go through one needs assessment, write one plan. And then report on all of these at the same time instead of each one individually. And, and previous to this, each one had somewhat different rules depending on which group that OD or which laws applied. Uh, we also uh, had, when we went through this the first time, our idea was let's write this so that it's even more comprehensive than that. So that we can use these talking points, these needs assessments as broadly as we can in our district to direct our general funds, uh, our state funds, what this is pointed towards and our federal funds as much as possible so that we're not recreating real and wasting our time. Plus it's the main things. So you can see some of, David, go back, David, go back one please. So you can see some, these are the uh, the state grants and projects. The federal aren't listed. The federal would be title one, title two, title five, title four. Depending on our district receives a lot of those, but not all. And then there's other grants that we received that we could, we would use the same information also. And just here's some vocabulary. The continuous improvement planning, that's just us trying to improve in the plans that we write. Everyday Matters. Usually most people know that as attendance. But it's also school culture, safety, instructional improvement. The career connected learning, Dr. Ainsworth was talking about that quite a bit. And these are two of our biggest grants that we see here in the funding sources that we'll get into. The early indicator is a smaller grant. And here's some more of those grants for focus. And I think you're familiar with those. And this is our main planning team. Our, our cabinet and also our principals all contributed to this plan. And it, it's, it's broader than that. That's just the leadership team. Because this, this information needs assessment. We'll see in a few slides here that the, the data pool, the people that were pulling this information from a really broad. So here's some of the requirements for this planning process. And following slides, we'll dig into those a little bit more. And this is our equity lens. That was one of those first bullets there. And areas of focus and what we filter, what we're trying to do through when we're doing this planning. And this is some of the data, the groups that Dr. Ainsworth met with, several of us did, and we pulled their information, their narratives to us. When they tell us what's important, what they want to focus on, which leads to some of our, our our objectives here and our outcomes, strategies. And it's a pretty broad list of, of folks that we've involved in the process. And we don't always say to them, hey, I'm asking you this specifically for this integrated plan. And I would say generally we don't. But this is the group that is organizing out of this decision-making. And some of these groups are really broad, like the PLC groups. That's inclusive of all, all staff in our district. And if there is a group um, in here that we, we failed to reach out to, uh, we'll, we'll be mindful of that and try to engage them the next go-around. And the next go-around starts tomorrow essentially. And here's some of our highlights. We want to raise academic expectations. Report on our progress. This should sound familiar to you. And investigate the need for additional programs. And develop a long-term plan for alternative education. And we'll, we'll change that language. Taylor has, has been telling us that we might need to change the, the language, alternative education and choose something that's more appropriate for the time. And here's how some of these priorities are, this is how the priorities emerged. And some of these that are, are, are the most important to us and are, are really critical to your goals are increasing the passing rate. Increasing access to advanced placement, not just creating more advanced placement classes, but also looking at the demographics of these classes and making sure that we're not missing anyone. That everyone has a chance and is encouraged and placed in these classes to the greatest extent possible. And these are some of our largest, um, most outstanding intended outcomes. And I, I highlighted those or bolded those that stand out the most. And hopefully what you're seeing here is what you asked for in, in with the board goals and what Dr. Ainsworth is repeating to us. And at any time, please ask for a pause if we're cooking this. I just don't want to repeat it to you. So. And this list is extensive and it, it spreads out over uh, two slides I think I fitted into. Um, and these are what we're going to try to implement. These are our strategies to try to meet our objectives. And it, it's hard to summarize these because they're all so important. I, I was, when I was putting the slideshow together, I was thinking about leaving some of these out, but they're so critical. And it's a lot to try to do all at the same time, but a lot of these are interwoven. And you heard some of these today earlier. The big one that I, I added here at the end is, and we're, we're really engaged in this right now, is assigning staff in alignment with the district's current goals. And then, and prioritizing instructional improvement as the primary focus. We're trying to place people exactly where we need to, to get the rest of this done. And it's not always, we, we're really, it touches on that, what's best for students versus what is most comfortable for adults. We're really trying to align our resources, not just our funds, but also our expertise and personnel to get these lists. And this is a, when it gets posted to the website, these are the links that they'll be able to, the public can see those two documents that you have in front of you. The document, the, the bigger one. It's, it's listed in just answers to those questions. And that's the way it's placed. Even though it's not the most beautiful outline and their questions, you'll notice it seems like they could have even written those a little bit better. But it gets to the heart of what they're looking for. And then the, the spreadsheet that I put in front of you is a simplified version of the link up here just because the official one that I have to post and that goes to OD has a lot more codes, budgeting codes. And just for the sake of these tonight, you can see where our, our funding is going. And just to point out a few to you, you'll notice that there, the bulk of our money is going to K to six literacy. And you'll see that in the personnel, the large numbers in front of personnel in early literacy category column and the CIA column. You'll see in the CIA column, a large group of funding going to student support. And then also a lot of funding going to professional development to support both of those groups. And there is a, a two-year budget here. And the two, the, the second year is just increase of roll, withdrawal of costs and it's estimated. There isn't a substantial change between year one and two. So if you want to see the longer version, when we get this posted up, we'll make it available to you here. And if, if you want to see it sooner, reach out to David and we'll make it available. It's also important to note that the plan that I'm asking you to approve tonight, I'll say about ninety percent complete. And you'll kind of see one of these slides that's coming up, the process and where we're at. So I'm, I'm asking you to approve it knowing that it's about. So I'm, I'm asking you to approve it, knowing that it's about ninety percent complete because. People are going to comment on this. Uh, we're still finding out exactly where we're at with these funds and our general budget. Um, so there were some small things that will get changed and it's an ongoing back and forth between us and OD. To figure out exactly and dial this in. Especially the budget part. If we, one of the pieces of this plan is there's a tiered approach that OD put in place and. They're asking us to write into our plan, if we end up with more funding, if they increase one of the funding sources, the grants that you see on the page. Uh, where would we spend that money? And if it's here then, and it's gone through this process, we don't have to ask for approval after the fact, we can just write it in. The other areas, there is at least some funding already there. And these might be, those might be funded in and through another grant or through the general budget, but. At some point, if we did, if they told us, for instance, next year, the CIA budget is going up by twenty percent or ten percent. Or we're receiving a different or an addition to our early literacy grant, which is highly possible. At this point, we'll be able to just plug these in, some of this. The state holds us accountable in these areas and I bolded number four. Because that's a, another part of this plan that we'll be working on over the next, uh, probably about two months, we'll, we'll. The one, two, three, five and six. Or one, two, three are, are kind of set in place for, we get to choose what some of our goals are. I shared those with you two years ago. Um, it's just a big list of all of the those that clicked in the next slide. It's these bullets down here, the darker bullets, the squares, those are what OD sets for us. And we have to set goals for those and then report out. That last, the last square is one that. We, we, we've decided that we want to add in. Because the first, was it five are set in stone by OD and then the last one we're, we're placing in there to keep metrics of. To focus on that and specifically in, increasing the AP, the enrollment in AP classes. But it's college classes in general that we're going to focus on. And right now we're down here at the bottom sun. And so I'm asking you to review this plan and approve it tonight in the form that it is. Uh, by April thirtieth, I will submit all of this paperwork and more to OD. And they have, they'll take it. And then it starts a review process with OD and it's a constant back and forth, they will send, they'll send us. Um, comments and say, you need to tweak this or fix this, or what do you think about this? And we'll start slowly changing. And especially in the budget area, they'll say, this code isn't correct, can you change this code? And then the orange box, the Q A L P. With the asterisk beside it, that's a community group uh, that OD works with, where they pull. Educators, community from around the state and they review some of these plans. They kind of see if it's online with the legislation. And the intent of these grants and, and planning. And then we'll start, um, I'll submit our. Our goals, the numbers to OD and then they'll start a co-development process with us where. We come to a mutual agreement that these goals are not too far reaching, but they're not so basic. And we'll go back and forth there for a few weeks. And I, go back one, one more, let's see. And then, um, we, we signed some grant agreements with our charter schools. Cause they go through this process also. And then that last one is sometime in the, in the future, we'll report back where we're at. And then we go through about two years and then start back where we began. So questions or? Comments?
Any questions, Kevin?
No.
David?
Think I'm still digesting.
Yeah.
We're indigesting.
Okay, can I ask a question? I just want to confirm, this is a. Group application. For every grant we're applying for basically.
Okay, formally, legally, it's those that are on, on the paper, which is the state grants, however. Our plan originally was to use this for everything, so we'll cut and paste this information. Into the other grants and make sure that all of our grants are in alignment as much as possible. But it ends up becoming our bigger plan too, it's, it's a district plan.
Okay.
Sorry, I kept up a bit.
And over the, over the next few weeks, as you read through any of these documents, please ask questions. Either just send them to, I, I suggest if you're going to send it to me, send them to Dr. Anzworth also and we'll make sure that we. If it's a group that needs to work on that or to look into it, we will and then we'll get back to you.
I've been reading through stuff as quickly as I can.
It's a lot.
Justin. Yeah, I just, I'm more of a comment. We were trying to be really intentional. That this kind of work, it's a lot of work, right? You guys recognize as a public entity, state entity federally, there is a compliance component to our work. But if we're going to do it, we're going to try and make sure the compliance piece is aligned with our work. And so. When you look at it and it's comprehensive and it's wordy. The state is trying to, I, I'm going to give them kudos, they're trying to do a good job of streamlining things. So that we're not having to apply for all these things at once, that we can do it in bulk. But if you look at it, we, I think this is what's going to separate us from some other districts. We're really trying to do that work. If you're, you're, that if you, if you look at our practices and, and our priorities and how things are being allocated. You can go through those priorities and I think you could objectively say. Oh, I can see where they're trying to do that and where they're trying to do that. And he talked about AP, AP, I, I really think, I'm bullish on this. The, the work that is happening in our elementary schools with reading. Is not going to fix things tomorrow, but our elementary teachers and principals, if you go into these classrooms, they are teaching kids how to read. And if the kid struggles, they have strategies and they're working with them, there is a lot of blood, sweat and tears that is happening and. The reality is, we're going to have some kids in AP classes right now who might not be ready and that's okay. That's okay, but in the future, there's going to be a bunch of kids in the Goose Bay School District. Who are going to be at grade level reading, they're going to be proficient reading because of the work that's happening. In our schools. So it's just, here's my point, it's not just compliance, like this is, this is real work.
All right, it keeps us focused on the main things, it really does. And so when somebody asks a question, can we spend money here or here? I, I get off the list. And I look, is it in alignment with what we're doing? And if it's not, no, we'd go down that road.
I actually, you, you read it, I, I recognize what you're saying, Jeff, the, the things that we've been talking about and our priorities are, are sprinkled. Throughout it, so I, I definitely, I can definitely see that, that in there. I was a little surprised that, I, when you showed the state metrics, what they care about. I didn't see anything math related, which is, I guess I was a little, like I said, maybe I shouldn't surprise that, but.
That, that's interesting, their, their accountability framework is shifting a little bit. They just added it and we're excited about it, they just added eighth period of math, eighth period math. Yep, and we've been talking about eighth grade math all year, you know, like, hey. We've got to have a math target and some sort of measure, so that's, that's coming, yeah.
And we're, we're deep into math and one of those. Objectives up there was to.
Yeah.
Repair our process, because what we saw in our, in our soft data. Is that our students are really successful in their first door round in, in LA, but not in math. And we're hard at work to try and figure out what the reason is and we have some ideas. That we're going to implement next year and, and a lot of it just goes to making sure that. Like our courses that we have at the high school, our math courses, especially for the students that are the least confident. Are in direct alignment with helping them to be successful and. When they get to SWOP, they're usually, there's two classes that they have to pass for the most part, unless they're in the STEM field. And making sure that these classes are directly aligned to what they need to engage in one of those two classes. So that when they get there, it doesn't feel like, what is this? This is new. They should feel like, oh, this is, I've seen this before. And what I've been telling the teachers is my preference is they get there and we've already done a lot of that work and they say, wait, I've already done this. Because they are the ones that need that confidence the most.
Yes.
I would move that we accept the integrated guidance plan as presented.
Is there a second? It's like a Adrian second. Is there any further discussion? Adrian?
Uh, hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Arnie?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
David?
And the chair both sides.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your work.
Yep, thank you.
Now I'm going to fire up your slideshow in case it starts.
Is this when the music comes in?
Candy did a really nice job on the sound. So hi, I'm Candy, I'm the Director of Nutrition Services, this is Candy, she's my admin. Um, one of the things that we uh, do every year is Future Chef and it is a cooking competition that we do with the kids. Um, have a really great time with, um, this year we had five contestants, last year we had two. We started out with four, we ended up with two, Arnie was there, we ended up in a three-way tie three times. So they both ended first place in their recipes were submitted, uh, submitted to nationals. Um, this year we had five, we had six to start out with, we ended up with five. Um, and I do have some of the recipes. Here, I'll just kind of put here so you guys can kind of see some of the intricate recipes that the students. Um, did, there's a couple of them that I'm kind of shocked yet, but. You're welcome. Um, and so. We had. Two contestants from Lighthouse, we had. Two contestants from Milokoma and. Three contestants from Milokoma. She, she's the one that does this, put this all on, so.
We had two contestants from Milokoma and three from Lighthouse.
Yeah, okay. Um, the one student that did have to pass was at Sunset, so, um. What I do want to highlight is that I was, have been working with Eli about trying to incorporate the culinary program into this. And we did actually have one of our students from culinary come down and he was an assistant to the student chefs. So, um, he was basically the sous chef for the students. Um, and his name was Brandon Geary and he was a really nice young man. Stuck around, helped to clean up his dishes, the whole nine yards, um, so. You want to go ahead and?
Okay, here we go.
Can I ask, did the kids develop these or were these just recipes they found and made?
So these are recipes that they can find, however, they have to handwrite all their recipes for submission. Um, they have to follow the recipe to, the recipe that they turn in, they have to follow to a T, they cannot deviate from it. So what they write down is what they have to follow, okay.
And it was truly fun to be there, I don't know, did any board members on this time?
No, we didn't have any board participation this time, matter of fact, I had to go out into the community and find a third judge.
If I was not a town, I would have just.
You can just play it, just put it on and let it play through.
Looks like we'll be used to this.
So Soen was the winner, Soen's recipe was presented to the national board. We have not heard back yet, usually we hear at the end of April, but. It's pretty phenomenal, that's why I gave you the recipes, you guys should try some of these recipes, the loaded. Mac and cheese is going to scare you when you look at the recipe list, but it actually turned out really phenomenal. Um, you should look and see what the ingredients are, that's all. Uh, we uh, decorate the kids from start to finish, when we start the contest, the first thing that started is safety. We do uh, food safety, we provide them with all their PPE, as you can see, we deck them out in their own chef gear. Um, Soen did end up with a professional chef's coat and hat as a winning prize along with everything else. That way if he does make it to the coun, um, national level that he can wear during the competitions.
Now, if he makes it to nationals, where does he go?
Well, that's, generally it's in the Mideast, um, I had not seen where they're going to put it yet. Because they generally announce it at the same time they announce all the finalists. Um, but it's centrally located, um, like last year, well, not centrally located, last year it was in Pennsylvania. They'll pick another state to do it in, um, which is kind of nice too, because then it uh, circulates throughout the whole state, um, it's. This is the year fifteen and we, I think in year three, it was on the Oregon coast, so it'll circulate, or on the, the west coast, so it'll circulate back around. So, um, but it's really fun, um, the students have an incredible time. I can, I have to turn volunteers from my employees away because they all want to work with the kids, um. So I'm hoping that with presenting this to the board and getting a little bit more board of appreciation. With what we do, we can build this program and make it bigger and more successful. Um, I know Roseburg, but we had five or six, Roseburg generally has like twelve, so we're not that far off, but. And we don't have enough room for twelve people, but we can, we can make it work, we can build, we can, you know, we have enough stuff that we can. We can have that many kids if we get the participation. And that's what we're going for, because it's a really great way to incorporate student learning, um, cooking skills along with making healthy choices at the same time. So.
They also have to speak.
And they do, that's another part of it, is that they have to plate their own food. They have, not only they cook it, but they plate it, then they have to present it to the judges and they have to answer the judges' questions. Um, and so they get really, really excited until it's time to push that cart down in front of the judges. And then, but you know what, they hold their own and they do a really nice job. We had some really great. Students this year that I was super impressed with their ability to answer all the questions, um. And they just, you did not see them get nervous.
Where do the kids come from? How did they find out about?
So we, um, generally when we start advertising this in November. Um, and we go around to each school, we choose fifth grade because. It's not quite fourth grade, but then it's not quite sixth grade where they're going to have more skill sets, um, but fourth grade's a little. Could be a little iffy with some of the knives and stuff and, you know, so, so we chose fifth grade and we go around to each school and we present it to the student. Students, she was able to present actually to the students at Lighthouse this year, we presented it to the administration at the other two schools. Um, so we're hoping that next year we'll be able to actually present it to the students as well.
Yeah.
So she puts, she puts on a, this is her baby, she, this is her. So she likes to, she puts it all together, um, she, the presentation packets for the students, um. You know, so. It's really fun and I tell you what, if I can't stress enough, you guys should come watch, as Arnie can say, it's super fun. To just sit and watch the kids because they do it themselves. We're on, we're just on the back burner, we help like, if they need help with cutting skills and things like that, we help, we step in then, but. The kids do the cooking on their own.
And you get to go back and watch them.
How about food? Who provides the food today?
So provides, yes, we provide everything from uh, the, the. Yes, we provide everything from uh the, the, all the ingredients for each recipe, again, we duck them out with. Um, their bling bling, um, we provide all their uh PPE where as well, each student will leave with their personal cutting board. Uh, a taring knife, um, cut gloves, you know, they, they have. All the stuff that they get home, we provide their measuring cups, their measuring bowls, we provide um all that. And so they, and they take all that.
So there's no financial barrier.
There's no financial barrier for any student participation.
And there's price packs that they go home with.
Yeah, and the price packs are built around food as well. Um, this year it was a baking um set, um. Last year it was pots and pans and they were pretty nice, I would. Would have liked to have seen a pot like that. It's been a few years since.
How do we feed the kids at Lighthouse?
How many kids?
How do we feed them?
We feed them just like every other school.
So, but you don't have a kitchen there, right?
Yes, we do.
Oh, you, oh.
We have a production kitchen there, yes.
That's good to know.
Bunker Hill is still an active production kitchen. Um, the only place we don't have a production kitchen is obviously Blossom Gold and the district office.
Right.
Or. Milner Crest, or whatever.
Whatever it's going to be.
Whatever it's going to be next year, yeah. So all of the kitchens are production kitchens. It is nice.
I went on a visit, they didn't take me to the kitchen.
Okay, well, if ever you want a tour of a kitchen, just let me know and I'll arrange it and I'll take you. I'll show you because we have worked really diligently over the last two years. We have worked to bring in air fryers to help make the food quality a little better. We've got two of them at Marshfield, we have one at the Junior High and then Milacoma and Sunset, both got one as well. Um, so. That just helps us have more of a palatable um product, especially when it comes to french fries and you know, stuff like that. Versus always baking because that's a law, that's the requirement is we have to bake, we can't do anything differently. So now we're able to air fry and it makes a huge difference and the kids have noticed, the students, excuse me, have noticed, they like it. We're still getting the one at Sunset fixed. It's okay, we won't talk about that, but so far it's been a, a very successful um. Addition to our.
How's the kitchen in Madison?
I love the kitchen in Madison, I tell you, I love that kitchen, I helped design it, so it's just perfect. We learn from Eastside what not to do, so you know, Eastside is. We still have work to do at Eastside, but um the Junior High and Madison are, they're exceptional kitchens. Yeah, I'm super excited and super happy with the end result.
So is there um opportunities maybe for our culinary arts kids to have internships?
Yes, well, I've been working with Eli as well. Um, with that, where we can work, transportation is probably the biggest barrier. Um, for our culinary kids, so because obviously they would have to travel um to other locations. So um it was actually a barrier for this as well, because since it was a school function that we had to go through transportation in order to get us the kids over. So that's a barrier that, that we're going to address um this summer, but yes, my end goal is to have. Or I, what I would like to do um in my capacity is bring the culinary students into the kitchens. Because again, it comes down to see what we've been talking about all along, is this is going to give them an idea of what it is to work in a professional kitchen as well. Granted, we are governed uh very. Heavily by um rules and regulations, but still they're going to learn their food safety, they're going to learn how to use the machines, they're going to learn how to um follow recipes. They're going to learn, there's so much that they can learn. Um, and especially in like Future Chef, they can also use that if they, the kid, um. Brandon can use that towards his community volunteering as well. So um we can use it in that capacity as well as student work hours.
We also had a couple of student workers, I think one last year from high school who came to this building. And then we have a couple students who volunteer at Lighthouse, correct?
Yes, so I have, currently I think I have. Two of our employees that actually started out as student workers. Um, in high school, they both came from destinations. Um, and they have worked their way, Kayla is, is um working, still working for me part-time to this, to this day. She does have a full-time job at Bandit Dunes, but she still works for me two days a week on her days off. So um, so like I said, it, it's something that's fun, interactive, um, it's hard work. But it's still rewarding, we, those little kids coming up and smiling at you because we're feeding them. There's, you've got to be behind the line and you will understand. So. It's a proven fact that most kids, or not a proven fact, let me rephrase that, that if you were to talk to many students, especially from. Um. Communities that have uh poverty issues. That they remember their lunch ladies. And lunch gentlemen over. Their teachers.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they see them every day. We, we do an important job.
Thank you.
You're welcome, any more questions?
Any more questions?
Nope.
Thank you. All right, I gotta get my kid to work now.
Okay. Ex- Estuary Explorer. Ex- Rover.
Yes, you got it.
Our mouths are all going.
Oh, yeah, no worries.
And Stacy, I promised you a clicker, but it is on the fridge.
That's okay, I'll just signal when.
Sounds great.
Sounds great, all right, hi everyone, my name is Stacy, I am the UK AmeriCorps member at South Sioux Reserve in Charleston.
If you don't know what AmeriCorps is, it's basically a national program um composed of a bunch of volunteers that are placed in a different community. And their whole kind of deal is to do a service project within different um categories. So the categories can include education, healthy futures, economic opportunity, things like that. So my service project is education-based and it is Estuary Explorers. And so I'm going to be presenting a little bit about um kind of how Estuary Explorers engages students um in the larger Coos Bay and North Bend community in outdoor learning and outdoor exploration. And so just to start off with a little bit of what Estuary Explorers is, so Estuary Explorers is a K through eight after-school program focusing on environmental and outdoor education. Um, it is usually led by UK AmeriCorps member, which is me in this case, but UK AmeriCorps members at South Sioux do change from year to year. Um, so South Sioux is actually the main kind of organization that hosts this program and makes it possible through having an AmeriCorps member. Um, so um, UK AmeriCorps is basically United Community Action Network AmeriCorps. And it is tailored to southwestern um Oregon communities and specifically rural communities. So the members are posted here to kind of serve the unique community-based needs. And in Coos County, that's normally through education. Uh, so Estuary Explorers really aims to engage students um in their natural curiosity of the environment. While also making sure that we are kind of fostering scientific skills through STEM-based and STEAM-based activities. And so a main kind of facet and really important factor of Estuary Explorers is that it doesn't take place at South Sioux Reserve. It takes place at local educational sites across Coos Bay, Coos County. Um, so for example, one of my programs actually takes place right here at Blossom Gold. Um, and Estuary Explorers is completely free to students, so if we really are trying to make it a very accessible program. Because South Sioux Reserve in general is kind of rural, it takes a long time to get there. A lot of students might not have transportation to get there or their parents might not have time to bring them to South Sioux. So we wanted to kind of bring a program that would be onsite and place-based for a lot of good learning opportunities for students. And because we are at local educational sites and we're not at the reserve, we do have, um, kind of recruit a local teacher to help with programming. Um, and that local teacher is super important and crucial in ensuring that our programming runs smoothly. They help to manage students, sometimes we have upwards of twenty-plus students in the program. And if you have any experience in outdoor learning, you'll know that having a lot of young kiddos outside can be a lot to manage. So having that teacher is really important and, and really just like a nice way to seem, to streamline the program. Um, and so they also help to recruit students in the school district, so they're kind of like an in-between between the reserve and the programs onsite. So they're really important in making our education accessible as well. And so um Estuary Explorers has been around since about twenty fourteen, but it really kind of started taking off with the AmeriCorps member um after COVID. Um, obviously during COVID it was very impacted, we didn't have Estuary Explorers as a lot of programs and after-school programs, most likely didn't happen. Um, but in twenty twenty-one, we were able to have that first AmeriCorps member that kind of got the initial um. Program rolling, and so we started off at Milacoma School um with about three sessions that happened at that school. We had four high school interns and we had thirty-one students that were reached through the program. Um, and then in twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three school year, we didn't have an AmeriCorps member, it was a failed recruitment. But we were still able to garner a lot of momentum in the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four school year. Um, so we had two new sites actually joined, so that was North Bay Elementary School and then Blossom Gold School. Um, we had three sessions again, two high school interns that helped to support programming and sixty-three students. So that student number doubled in just over a year, even with the program draft, which I think is really awesome to see. Um, and as you can see here, we have a couple of programs from the past, um, pardon, a couple of pictures from the past programs. Um, and one of the pictures is the students doing water quality monitoring at Milacoma Marshes, which I think is a really sweet picture. All right, and then this year, this is the year that I've kind of been in charge of. Um, so we've been able to grow the program to four different educational sites. Um, two new, two of those sites are new, so we have Hillcrest Elementary School and then Bandit Community Youth Center, which I think is really cool, we've been able to reach Bandit as well. Um, so we have had four sessions already completed this year. I've had two sessions at Hillcrest Elementary School, so one of them is actually still occurring right now and then a second session is happening at North Bay as well. So a total of six sessions for this year, which is really awesome that we've been able to see that. And we're hoping in um next year to maybe grow it to eighty sessions, eight to ten sessions would be really awesome in a full school year. Um, I have two high school interns, one from North Bend and one from um Coos Bay Schools. And then we've reached actually one hundred and fifty-eight students so far, which is really exciting to see so much program growth this year. Um, and a lot of that is because Blossom Gold and Bandit Community Youth Center, um, they have a lot of different students kind of cycle in and out, since they're more like after-school program-based and not specifically like K through eight schools. Um, so they have a lot of different students, student cycles too, but it's really cool to see so much student interest as well. Um, at Hillcrest specifically, we've had almost fifty students on the waitlist for this program. So it's really garnering a lot of community support and we're really um excited to see that. And I'm hoping that that number will also still grow this year, since we have another program coming on and happening in May. Um, so it's really exciting, and then these are a couple of pictures from the programs. Uh, this one's at Blossom Gold, they're actually pointing to an ammonita mushroom, which if you don't know, are common to Pacific Northwest, they're poisonous. So it was a learning moment for them because they thought it was really cool. Um, and then this is a program at North Bay and they um. Made nature mandala, so just one of the favorite activities I've done with kids, they basically collected their own nature materials and created this really cool artwork within the forest.
What age group?
K through eight, but most of my students are um elementary school right now and I'll get into it. Um, so every um, every kind of program session, I've really tried to integrate field trip to the reserve for the students. And this field trip is completely free to them, um, it's all done through South Sioux Reserve. So we have a couple of bands, I pick up the students and I bring them to the reserve. And so the reserve field trips could look like maybe just a trail hike or even sometimes families join the students if they are free and available to come see the reserve as well. Or we have um students come to our reserve and go to one of our restoration sites and pull invasive species. So we like to involve them in a lot of different ways, and so these are some of the pictures. This is uh from the Bandit group doing a trail bingo hike. And then this is from families in the field for Hill, Hillcrest, where a couple of the families actually came out and got to do a little hike in the reserve. So it was really, really fun. And so one of the main reasons why I'm here today is you'll notice that a lot of the schools that we are at currently are kind of North Bend heavy. And we really want to expand to Coos Bay schools. Um, so we used to have that program at Milacoma, but in recent years we haven't been able to kind of re-establish the program there. Um, so we really want to re-establish the program at Milacoma in the next year and also Eastside, since they are right next to each other. Um, and they have access to Milacoma Marshes, which is just a beautiful, wonderful outdoor space with so much opportunity for outdoor learning, especially on birding, water quality, things like that. So it would just be a really great space to have, we really are hoping to expand there. Um, and then in the future, we also really want to keep kind of fostering those strong relationships with schools and educational teachers um for year-to-year continuity. A lot of the time, the problem with Estuary Explorers has been we haven't been able to kind of nail down specific teachers who are really interested in helping out, kind of supervise the program. And that's completely valid, teachers are very busy and oftentimes don't have the support to kind of run an after-school program like this or help assist with an after-school program. Um, so we just really want to make sure that we're finding teachers who um are able to help for maybe a longer amount of time or know other teachers who would be interested in helping. So we really just kind of want to get up in front of the school district and make sure that um teachers know about this opportunity and are open to it from year to year as well. Um, and so one of the reasons um we are kind of, one of the ways we're helping to support teachers is we're actually applying for a grant for stipends for teachers. Um, and so a lot of the teachers that we have now who are helping to supervise the program are already kind of externally supported through a stipend for after-school program time. Or it's kind of like part of their job to be an after-school supervisor. Um, so we're applying for grants for teachers who don't have that um financial support to kind of provide them that support to um help supervise the program. Um, and also make the program run smoother. So that's hopefully going to be approved this year and if that happens, that will be available for next year programming. And then of course, we also want to continue to increase access, increase accessibility to after-education, no matter the location. Um, so a lot of things with place-based learning is really kind of learning the resources that each school, school site has available to them, especially in outdoor resources. So for example, North Bay Elementary School has a beautiful trail system, um, which is just like right, kind of like twenty feet off the site of the school, so super accessible to the kids. And a lot of the kids are really connected to that area, but for example, Blossom Gold doesn't have as much um outdoor space, it has like kind of a big field. So it's kind of just like learning how to tailor the experience to those outdoor locations, no matter what they look like. And teaching students that nature doesn't necessarily have to be this pristine reserve, just like South Sioux is, it doesn't necessarily have to be that, nature surrounds us wherever we are. Um, even if it's just a little flower growing out of the concrete, um, it's just really important and we want to teach students that you can access that no matter where you are, you don't have to be in this pristine area. It can be a tree or it can be just a small bug on the sidewalk, but then that can bring you joy in your day and that you can learn about. Um, so I think that's one thing that Estuary Explorers really does well and letting students know that that um outdoor nature is not just in your textbooks, accessible to you wherever you are. And then how can you all support Estuary Explorers and representation? So one of the main things that you can do is you can volunteer. So AmeriCorps does a really good job of engaging community volunteers. Um, the main source of volunteer for Estuary Explorers has been those high school interns and we really do rely on those high school interns. So if you all know of high schoolers that would be interested in entering next year, definitely let them know, you can contact me, I can get them set up for that. Um, but we also really want to engage adult volunteers, adult community volunteers, because we really haven't seen that for Estuary Explorers. We have a lot of adult volunteers who help with um kind of other programming in the reserve, we don't have any for Estuary Explorers. It'd be really awesome to get some adults who are willing to dedicate their time to the program. And it doesn't have to be for a whole session, sessions can sometimes be a week's long, so you could volunteer for a week. Or you could volunteer for just one day, or you could volunteer for a field trip, like whatever you are wanting to do. Volunteers are kind of flexible in what they're willing to do. Um, and you can help manage the students, you can help facilitate activities, you can help lead hikes. Um, we're kind of open to whatever you are wanting to do as a volunteer. And then if you can't volunteer, you can also donate supplies. So the reserve does have some funding for Estuary Explorers to have kind of supplies for different crafts and things. We're always looking for more kind of external funding and donations. Um, so that could be papers, pens, craft supplies or any like scientific tools that you think would be really helpful for programming. So for example, we recently were donated this um like salmon, salmon lifecycle jar set, I don't know if you all have seen them, but if you've been to Charleston Marine Life Center. They have kind of those salmon lifecycle stages, and so it's just a really cool thing for students to see kind of in action and to see how the salmon eggs grow. Um. So that's something you could do, and if you can't volunteer or donate, that's completely okay. You can also just spread the word in Coos Bay Schools, a lot of people don't still know about the program. Um, so it'd be really awesome to just have more teachers know about the program, more administrators know about the program and more parents know about the program too, so that we have more community support. And then just continuing to support science is a really, really big thing. I think um a lot of the students that I have, they haven't had a lot of experience in science yet. Um, so those experiences for them are really exciting and I think kind of continuing to support that um as they are young and then as they grow old into more um upper-level sciences is really important. And then also continuing to support outdoor learning, no matter what that looks like. So yeah, any questions?
So where was your, before you go on to AmeriCorps, what, what school did you go to and what was your study?
Yeah, so I went to Knox College, it's a small overart school in Illinois, um, kind of Western Illinois, and I studied environmental studies. So a very broad topic, it's more policy, social and science-based.
So some nice destinations has kids that go out to the South Sioux and pull weeds?
Yeah, obviously, yeah, we have a bunch of different school groups, yeah, of all ages, it's really awesome.
What can the school district do to help you start a program at Milacoma or Eastside?
Um, that is a really good question, I, I think it's mainly just about support and contacting administrators. I think a lot of time, the administrators get so busy, especially because sometimes we contact principals and we really try to like push the, the connection layer. But sometimes they get so busy that it just kind of drops away, it's not like first priority and we completely understand that. So I think just establishing that connection and knowing that we have rapport to keep asking like, hey, are their teachers interested? Hey, can we go talk at a meeting to recruit more teachers? Um, is this something that you have the capacity or support right now? Just really spreading the word to them that this is something that we really want to take off and that we're very passionate about.
Has she done that now?
She's gonna, we're gonna get ahold of her. Yeah, we're gonna figure out why they did this, this actually fits perfect, it's our theme of CTE.
Yeah, definitely.
Right, because kids, there's science in a book, right, which is important. But kids start to get on fire about science when they see it up.
Exactly.
Right, so when we can take.
Yeah.
Take it out into the wild and they can see some of these things.
Yeah.
So yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna connect the dots.
Are you, are you open to other school sites in Eastside? Yeah, definitely. Yeah, yeah, any school site, um, I'm also working on getting it kind of established in Sunset for next year, we were able to fit it in this year. Uh, but um Jen Marie, she actually was running one of the after-school programs, she's really interested in helping out with that. So hopefully I can get a meeting in with her and um set that up for next year for the next AmeriCorps.
AmeriCorps, please.
Um, I'm only here for one year.
Okay, so you're getting ready for next year, do we know who is coming or?
I do not. I do not, they're still recruiting. But I, I hope that the person will be very passionate about the project and will be really ready to hit the ground running, so.
Have you ever thought about teaching?
You know, this was kind of a trial run for me this year, and I, and I actually do really enjoy it, so I could, I could see myself pursuing it, yeah. Of course, yeah. Yeah, thank you so much, great time. Any other questions?
Any other questions? No, thank you very much.
Contact me if you have any questions.
I will, I will push this, but I'm on that anyway.
Oh, that's awesome. That's great. Yeah, awesome, great, thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Skinner, we have come to your part.
Okay, I'll be as briefly, as brief as I can be, anyways. Just as an aside, I would like to really underscore the importance of what Dr. Amesworth presented to you. Personal experience, before I became what I currently do, I was an educator, education specialist, working out in Washington DC. I remember that when I was in high school and I got track, went to go into college, I lost all my classmates almost, because they went into shop or whatever, tech education, and we were separated. And then it got worse, because everybody had to go to college. And personally believe that a lot of the disciplines we have in our country today is a result of that, that, that thinking. So it's incredibly important, what you presented to bring those things back together. And because they are, really should be, are part of a whole thing. And I hope it brings a lot of healing to our society, and I wish you all this, may we succeed in that. So anyway, I'm coming from Community Coalition Empire, my name is Steve Skinner. And he's a member as well, Community Coalition has been around for twenty-one years now. We are officially recognized by the City of Coos Bay, I'm nice, or a part with the Downtown Association. Well, we cast a much broader net than the Downtown Association, that's why we call ourselves the Community Coalition. The city has recently adopted the Empire Blueprint Plan, which is bringing a lot of upgrades to downtown Empire and the waterfront. They finally realized that half the population of Coos Bay now lives in Empire, so they're paying a lot more attention. So one of the goals is specifically to make, create more housing. And on that note, we're particularly interested in senior housing. There are a lot of retirees in our community, particularly in Empire. And way back ten or fifteen years ago, when the bank, both the managers of the bank prior to its closing, were part of CCE and active in it. And they saw a need, because of so many older people in Empire, who would like to downsize, they had no place to downsize to, and that was freedom of housing. And still would for younger families to move in and with children going to school. And so we're particularly interested in senior housing. And that brings us to the possibility of taking a look to relocating the bus barn to a more central location. Which would free up almost two blocks of land for housing. And our, our best case scenario would be for senior housing, because it would allow seniors to be able to walk to the caves and to the post office and that kind of thing. And there's no, nothing like that around at this point. There are retirement places you can go live in and everything. But our interest is particularly in doing small houses, tiny houses, small houses, or small dwell, smaller dwellings, not a big apartment block. And making kind of a village-type, camp-style approach. And that would tie us right into what was presented by Dr. Amesworth, because we'd love to see that those dwellings be built by high school students. That was done, I live on a block in North Bend, right near Old Street Park, and almost every home on my block was built by North Bend High School students back in the seventies. So I know it can be done. I just saw a program on television a couple of days ago in Bill 6 County in New Jersey. It was a freshman class at a magnet school, and they were building exactly that small houses from the ground up. And learning all the carpentry skills, electrical skills and everything like that. And this is a freshman class, and they were all going to go, you know, they all had their careers plotted out right in front of them, they're all excited about it. And so it seems like a really cool thing to do, if, if it could work out. Anyway, so I've talked a little bit to Matt Fortesras at Coos Bay Housing. So he's a potential partner, he's pretty excited about it. What we'd have to do, there are two locations that we've kind of talked about. One would be the property at the end of the track at Sunset. And has them, it's large, fairly large property. Where you go locate it now, I don't know if you've been out there recently, but when they park those buses, there's not room for even half a bus left. So you're, you're full to capacity at that bus barn. So there's no room to grow. So the, the property at the end, the school board owns there, is a larger piece, and it would require some creative thinking. And a lot of good landscaping to make, keep neighbors happy, but it is a potential site. The other site, which we generally talked about, was where the library had looked at being located next to Cascade Farm and Supply. That is a, that was the ideal location, because it's kind of midtown between Empire and Coos Bay. They already have a traffic light, so it'd be easy getting in and out of motion. And in that regard, I have approached the city when we first started talking about this. And the initial response from Nicole, the city manager, was exciting, excitement, because they are looking at relocating their facilities from down in South End County, which is directly in the tsunami zone, to a non-sunami location. And they were looking at putting it up there by Cascade Farm and Supply. And so we talked about possibly co-locating the two facilities, which would save everybody a lot of money, take some planning, obviously. But it's a pretty intriguing idea. The idea for you guys would be to save money, because if you're more centrally located, you don't have to spend as much time and gas, fuel, labor, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, and then the city's warped from theirs, they have now actually looking, beginning to look at relocating City Hall. And Police Department and everything to that location. They have applied to federal government already for site preparation. So also then subdivision that's going in there, four hundred homes. They're looking, they have to have another way to get in and out there, now they're looking at bringing it around and coming out at the Cascade site. So they're looking at the city, the owner's property up in there, water departments just logged that all off. So that's kind of where the growth long-term is going to go. If Coos Bay does expand, if the container port materializes in some form or another, and/or wind energy comes in, there's gonna be growth. All that growth is gonna have to go to the south. They, they've even talked about possibly heading all the way out as far as Charleston, looking really long-term. So this is a long-term thing that I'm talking about, but. So to, to do this, we probably need a small committee, really small committee. You know, take an initial exploratory look at this. The one thing we need to figure out in particular would be cost benefit kind of thing. And personally, it'd be kind of cool if math class could take that on with adult supervision. Because it's basically, it's just mathematics, how many miles you're gonna save, how much gas you're gonna save, et cetera, et cetera. So that would be a nice in-house solution. If that doesn't work out, we could try something at SWAC, we could go to OSU, Interpol. There are all kinds of possibilities there, and it's been done on many other projects, so there's a lot of precedent for, for going that way. And it obviously saves a lot of money, and none of us have money, we all know that, so. So that, that would be kind of where we're at. So I'm just putting it out there as an idea, I think it's really doable. Not gonna happen overnight, we all know that, but you gotta start the conversation someplace. And it has a lot of potential on a lot of different areas, that seems like a win-win for everybody, so. Any immediate questions?
Who owns the property of everybody, partners, this place? Who owns the property?
I don't know, oh, next to Cascade, I don't, I don't know, the city had paid a holding fee to it when they were looking at building a library there. And that's no longer the case, so I don't know. And if they're gonna put the road through there, it would obviously not be right on that particular site, but it would be off that road. So there's a lot of things to be thought through, I recognize that, but I think it can be done. It's just a matter of making a decision, let's take a look.
We own the best property. So are, is the coalition or the city, is somebody gonna purchase that property if we were able?
Well, no, you would have to sell, you would sell the bus barn property. There, according to Nicole, there are a lot of developers around, because of potential to the container port and wind energy. Our preference would be to work with Coos Bay Housing, because they can get grants, and he's also really interested in having the students do some of the building. And taking that project on as kind of a showcase demonstration project, that could grow into a lot of other things, so. So it's also possible you could, you know, lease it, those are all kinds of things that would have to be explored, so. And so we're looking at somebody from the city who's totally on board, they can't be the driver for the project. I'd probably be the representative from CCE, I'm going to commit to starting the conversation. And we'd have to have someone from a bus barn that knows what the needs are. And somebody from the school board or within the school system to, you know, help drive it along. And, you know, do our initial, what we've got to figure out to make a roadmap.
Okay, so is there interest? We, we've had a presentation, we continue to listen to presentations and then we drag on. So I'd really like to know if there's some interest in pursuing this, at least doing some initial.
I'm coming at you out of the blue, I've realized that.
I mean, I guess, I guess I would wonder if this is something the facilities committee would have, would be interested in looking at or not. I mean, as a board member, I don't know if I, I don't like care initially, other than, you know, I could hear it might have a benefit for a community. You know, is there, is there a solution that, that benefits all, I just don't know the answer to that or not. You know, there's a lot, there would be a lot of things that have to take some thought out. Yeah, I mean, you know, property is not easy, I can tell you how you look, look for property around here for various purposes, so, you know, and I don't even frankly, you know. Do we own the property, do we own the property? We have some arrangement for us people to be using it. So, so, yeah, I mean, obviously, you don't want to give up property unless you have something that's really looks like it's gonna be something that's workable and get a good deal.
What do you think?
You have that person who backed you.
Yeah, well, it's soccer season for me, so. It, I wouldn't be able to, I wouldn't dive in on it, but my, my main thing is, is we've got a lot of projects going on. And a lot of resources going other places, so when we initially first heard from them would be you guys do everything, and we're just sitting back here, just gonna see what happens, but. Yes, I wouldn't be able to put too much into it myself.
It's a large, it's quite a bit of property to store that many buses on it, so you need somebody to cancel right there.
It's also where our maintenance people are, so we're talking about that property as well, and then you have to relocate them, or we're just talking about where the buses?
I don't know.
Sedex is there too.
No, I'm not expecting an answer tonight, by the way.
They're all together.
Yeah, you can take it under advisement, think about it.
I think maybe we should do that, I think we should send it to Facilities Committee. Let Kevin talk to them, see if anyone else can step up. Or if they think it's a good idea to at least send someone to a meeting for a couple times to see what's going on. See if it's moving forward, then we'll get back to it.
I mean, it'll get a life of its own, or it won't. We don't try and make a couple of steps, it'll never happen. And I'm trying, we're trying to think, you know, long-term and be as inclusive, community inclusive as possible. Because I think that's incredibly important, as I pointed out, so.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, obviously, housing is an issue. We know in the community empire, Coos Bay, North Bend has their own housing constraints, it's challenging the state, right? I, I think there's worth having a conversation about, it doesn't have to be a feasibility study, but to have a feasibility conversation, right? Because all of you have brought up valid points, the land piece, the facility piece, you know, who builds the structures, you know, there's a legal component, here's the finance piece. So just to start the conversation, I've seen enough of these things happen where at least you get the ball rolling, it doesn't happen right away, but there's some momentum that maybe when the stars align, some of the conversation, there's a record of the conversation, and there's some, some process.
Okay, okay, that's fun, perfect, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you, we'll see you Thursday, right? I think I'm in your guys' place Thursday.
Yeah, I'll leave you off, you're on. Yeah, I think Matt's gonna speak next one. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Are you guys here for public input? I would like to move public input out of order before we do the policies, if we could.
Okay.
These people have been so generous sitting there, and I just saw them looking at the clock, so.
I thought you were looking at the clock.
Please come up and, and address us. Toby and Mary Rehner.
Thank you for the opportunity, my name's Toby Rehner, I'm the Marshville, Marcy Head Baseball Coach. I am here, unfortunately, for a negative aspect, and then hopefully we can tie into a positive, I'm looking forward to. I kind of want to shed a light on to the disconnect that there is between our program and other programs at the high school, along with the disconnect between the program and the facilities and the district in its own. To shed a little, shed a little light, we've had a scoreboard that hasn't been working for fourteen months, but it's been at the districts since September, hasn't been installed yet. So the boys are currently playing with no scoreboard, even though it's sitting at ESD waiting to get installed since September. I was told to my face that if it was another program scoreboard that was inoperable, it would be urgently installed and fixed. And unfortunately, apparently ours is not as urgent as other programs to get fixed. There's been a lot of information given to me that certain things have been purchased with money that was supposedly donated to the baseball program. Which I am waiting to hear back on that, on whether it was donated purely to the baseball program, or to athletics in general. And I would love to get clarity on that, along with if it is incorrect information I'm being told, and I would love to be corrected, and why it's been sitting for six years. If that's the case, if it was given to the department instead of just to the program. And then shed some light on to the facility that we have down there. For the past seven, eight years, I've been involved with the program, the last three as a head coach. Money coming directly out of our pockets to. Money coming directly out of our pockets to fix the facilities. And the back and forth with multiple facility coordinators with very little to no leeway into getting it fixed. We've had sprinklers installed in our field that haven't worked for five years, so it requires us to water by hand early in the morning. It requires us to mow before every game because the equipment that the district uses is apparently too heavy to use when the field is wet. So it's time out of my day, my coaches' days, our work schedules, time away from our families to maintain facilities for the boys where every other sport gets it maintained by the district. I was informed that on countless occasions by every visiting outdoor facility or program that it's amazing that certain programs here look as they do and ours looks as bad as it does, so clearly we are low on the totem pole as far as importance. The, we are one of two programs that get affected by the weather to where we can't practice or play depending on the outdoor weather. So 70 to 80% of our practices have to be done inside of a gym where we can't use adequate equipment. And the facilities that we do have outdoors are not enclosed. So they, every, all of our equipment rusts. Can, boys are cold, wet, cannot properly warm up, which causes injury. And countless communications with facilities to amend this have gone unheard, so I am here for that. And then obviously, the positive side that I would like to work with is the idea of turfing at least the infield to the facility. I understand that the district sets aside 1.7% of the budget for the football stadium to get turfed every 10 years. The cost for the baseball and softball would be 30% of that with zero maintenance required by the district because there is not a single person at the facilities that is knowledgeable enough to work on a baseball field, let alone a turf baseball field. We do all of our own work on the areas that are currently turfed, which we also installed on our own. We have to purchase literally everything. Seed, we didn't feed, we have to water. If we don't, then, as you can tell in the springtime, it dies. So happy to take on questions and I would also challenge the board to come down and take a look at the facilities. Because they are not comparable to the requirements that should be necessary for the Oregon Post and Baseball, let alone the quality of teams that we play. They don't match. But yet we still send about 30% of our graduating seniors to the next level to play college ball. So the number would jump immensely if we had the facilities to use them.
Have you looked into the pricing of how much it would cost to turn?
It's about $300,000 to do just the infield of a baseball field. But it's a lot less impact than it takes for a football or in the district's case, the stadium. Takes a lot less work. But it's still.
Is the replacement still about every 10 years?
It can go a little bit longer if it's well enough maintained. But it's still only 30% of what this district already puts aside for the football stadium to get turfed, which would just be another additional 1.7% to the budget for both softball and baseball.
Is this an issue we were aware of before?
I can't answer that. Yeah, I mean, we, we, we know that there's the scoreboard issue. Marina can go into some of the details. Then we just have to be careful, we're persons to be heard, like persons we heard you present and then we follow up. It's not.
Yeah. But I just was wondering if this was something we had ever heard about before.
That was my hesitation at responding because it's not question answer time. I'm very clear about that. As for the scoreboard, it has been scheduled to be installed, but because of the tide levels, we were told it needs to happen later in April, according to what I'm told from our side. We did not want to spend the money, it was an extra $20,000, to get it installed before the dry season. So there was a conversation, I believe during the facilities committee, to let you get them both done, with the understanding that they were working to some capacity. Casey has made the decision it needs to get done sooner because it's not working. And so it's been scheduled to get installed. We just cannot install it ourselves, it requires heavy machinery. So that is being, that is scheduled, we just have no control over this actual installation.
That would be due to the fact that it waited until the wet season. If it was done in the fall time when it arrived, there wouldn't have been that extra cost, which I was also informed of. And it's also gotten pushed back again since the original installing.
Well, thank you, this is public comment. Appreciate your.
We appreciate this and we will take it under advisement.
I would love to be involved. I've reached out, I have close to 100 emails back and forth between prior facility managers and the current one. And it doesn't seem like any decision ever gets made that involves the actual program itself for the best interests of the kids.
I, I think we could involve you in any further discussions that we have. I think that would be appropriate. So you should expect to hear.
I appreciate it. What steps do, do I need to take to look, to propose the turfing for the, do I need to get a, the benefits to what money it brings into the community?
I'll be, I'll be honest with you, a proposal like that would be great. You shouldn't expect it to happen in the next year. Because I know they're in the process of doing the budget right now and not knowing about it, probably no chance they'd be able to slip it in, so.
I wasn't made aware of three years ago when we brought it up originally.
But we will start a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. How's it?
Thank you. Thank you for taking that out of order. We'll go back to policy updates. David.
What have you all been waiting for? Policy. First and foremost, are there any prospective policies for review? Any that you would like to add to the docket for our next policy committee meeting?
Looks like you have it up lined up.
Yeah, yeah, no, we do. Since I put it on there, I thought I'd ask. The good news is most of the policies we're working on now are just review policies. And what happened during our policy analysis is that about 130, I think it's 138 exactly, but somewhere around there, policies were flagged for review. Some of those indicated, you missed a sentence here, this title needs changed. Most of them included no notes. And what that indicated is that the policy hadn't been reviewed in a while. And, and we were supposed to review it to ensure that it still complies with district practice, that we're still following the policy and the policy still fits our practices. So a lot of these won't have any changes. What I've done is taken them to our cabinet level team. And if there's particular ones like, let's say it's about nursing, I'll take it to the nursing staff as well. I'll have them review this policy and say, hey, does this still match our, our district practices? Is there anything that you would suggest changing? If I get any of those suggestions, I then bring those to the policy committee and we work on them from there. So the first reading for information, those are ones that, there's no changes that we made. We are, they fit our current practice, everything is good. But we have reviewed them and I would like to still move them to readoption so that we have that noted, that we, we have reviewed this policy in 2025 and we deem it to still be appropriate. That way, when we look back, we don't, we don't see it as, hey, this hasn't been done since 97 when really we did review it. And then there's first readings for adoption that are OSBA recommended. One of those is we added one regulation to the list included in the policy EEACC, which is student conduct on school buses. There's, there's a list of different regulations on there, you know, a student shall not be moving while the bus is driving, you know, various things like that. One of the things that we added is students will not be on the bus without adult supervision. We put adult supervision instead of driver because sometimes that's a coach, chaperone, but some adult needs to be on the bus if there's students on the bus. And we thought that was very pertinent. So that was the only addition we, we chose to add there. Then we have use of feature films, videos or other media. This one went through policy committee two times. The first time we looked at it and we, this was a policy we hadn't had previously, but was highly recommended from OSBA. So I pulled another district's policy that also uses OSBA, so I knew I was getting their boilerplate, but I didn't use up my 20 freebies with OSBA. So I took their policy and then the only thing we added to that one was a caveat for the use of snippets or R-rated films. Now, that would be, obviously be the exception and not the rule. And there's, it basically indicates that they would need explicit permission from the superintendent. Part of that permission would be, they would need to explain to Dr. Anzwerth what educational value is provided by this. Like maybe it's a snippet of Schindler's List or, or something like that. What educational value is this? And, and also parents would have the opportunity to opt out in those instances that it was going to be shown. We don't expect it will happen often and after talking with Eli, it, it doesn't happen now. But we wanted to provide that opportunity, should a situation arise. We didn't want to be found by policy. So for the most part, no R-rated films or snippets will be shown. If they are, they'll be explicitly approved by the superintendent. So those are the changes we made to that policy. Then we have suspected sexual conduct report procedures in forms. There was a sentence that was indicated as missing on our policy analysis, so we added that sentence. Then we have a, a number of them for first reading for deletion. Those, we had about 100 policies that need to. So the good news is when we got the policy analysis, only five of the policies were statutorily required that we didn't have and those were all in the hopper on the way to be, before we even did the analysis. So they are most, for the most part, I think they're all adopted now, actually. And then there were between five and 10 that were highly recommended that we didn't have. And most of those are in the process or were in the process at that time. So all of those have been worked on, that's why we're now going through the review. So the, the analysis at first gave me a little shock factor, but as I looked in deeper, most of it was just reviewing to make sure it's still current practice. And we were in compliance with a vast majority of our policies. So all of those have been flagged for deletion, either because they were merged with other policies or they're no longer required. So OSBA recommended all of those for. And that's all I have for our policies. I assume you don't have any questions?
Are there any questions about these policies? In-depth analysis questions?
I was there, so I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. We accept these for first reading.
Wonderful.
Okay. Board member highlights really quickly. Adrian.
Oh goodness, I've been in contact with the SWAC physics department, they do their scheme pathways, deal a lot with third and through 12th grade students. So that's something that's just beginning and hopefully it'll be on though.
Perfect. Diane?
All right.
Went to the distinguished alumni dinner the other night and JJ Briggs and Les Single were the two inductees. And I don't know if everybody's heard of JJ's stuff. But JJ Briggs is a, was a kid who graduated when I was here. He went, was one of our first kids in our Sea Scouts program. And then he went on to Lady Washington for a year, failed at PD and that. And then went to Coast Guard as a mechanic for helicopters, but he didn't like being a mechanic for helicopters, he wanted to be the pilot of helicopters. So he worked his way through and got through training and became helicopter pilot. And the reason he was signified by the Coast Guard and whatever, the crew that goes through it, during Hurricane Harvey in Dallas, Texas. They decided to pre-station some Coast Guard helicopters in the, I believe it was Houston or Dallas, I think it's Dallas. And so they sent seven helicopters from some other place. Only one of them made it through, the others all turned back because it was stormy bad enough. So the only pre-positioned helicopter in the area was his. And over the next 48 hours, when the storm hit, they rescued 126 people. And it went through two helicopters. Because the one helicopter lost all electronics because there was so much water. He said, we had to tip the helicopter to get the water out. And so they left their rescue summer in a tree, still lighting their load and got back and got a new helicopter. By the time they got back to their rescue summer, he had rescued eight more people. Waiting on a rough spot. And then he said he watched them dive into this river of water going through to rescue a young child who was in the water. And he held him up with one hand while they got the pedal to it and got him up. Said it was a pretty amazing time, but it was, knowing JJ, he has always had a lot of that available energy.
Yeah.
But it wasn't his, his two older sisters were both relatives, or him. So he's a great kid, he just wasn't a student. And it was really interesting to hear him and Les Single's done a lot of stuff for training. So it was a great evening. I think it's one of the best programs we've always, the distinguished alumni. Encourage people, if they get a chance, to let us know.
I would say kind of.
I'm great.
Yeah. Devin?
I'd like to bring up the alumni because I was hoping for some kind of discussion to name something after Pirate Ted. Something, something in our school district because everyone knows him. If you don't, just ask someone that then they know him, you know, and nothing really named after him, he's a cool dude and he's been around with everyone.
So.
Yeah, yeah, I think he lives in Washington.
Yeah. He lives. Yeah. Not with me personally, but.
Okay, yes, I just, I talked to a family member and they said, oh, he moved to Washington. I'm like, oh man, okay, that's even better.
I thought it was so.
Yeah.
And not to disclose too much, but if anybody wants to visit him, it would be a good time.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so we, I, I think it'd be cool. I mean, you know, he's really sports related, you know, Marshfield High School stuff, so if everyone kind of brainstorm on some ideas, but yeah, I think the community would love it too.
I mean, it's a good facilities project.
Yeah. It would go, I would talk.
We brought in a number of bicycles throughout this lifetime, as Kuzner Club and other people.
Okay, and I'll just report today, we did our first painting session at Madison. We painted 20 spoon rests with very excited children. Adrian was there helping me. I was given an hour, within a half an hour, these kids were done. They were like, painting! Paint everywhere. And then, and then she says, well, when you're done, go over and sit on the thing and grab a book. And so Adrian wisely looked at these children all heading over there and he grabbed a book and sat down and read with them as we finished up. And it was really fun. So tomorrow we're doing it and on Wednesday and Thursday. So if anybody wants to come help, it takes about a half an hour, like I said. And it's really fun to see the kids. And also, I have been attending OSBA Rural Caucus meetings. They did form a rural caucus. The World Caucus is just getting up and running. They really don't have a lot on their agenda right now, but they are organizing legislative days and they are all going up to the legislature to do some lobbying. And there is training and assistance for anybody who wants to do that. So if anybody's interested in going up and lobbying in Salem, good place to start. And I think we can adjourn to executive session. Do we have our attorney here?
No, and I won't be here, but you, you'll need to read the ORS to adjourn us and then I'll pull Michelle.
Okay. We're going to dismiss to executive session pursuant to ORS 192.66O, Section D, to conduct deliberation with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations.
Okay. Give me, give me one moment to pull Michelle into a room.
We are going into executive session, all of you who are watching us online. We will be back.
And then we'll be gone.
And then we'll be leaving.
Unless there's a motion.
So they're all leaving now, see, I thought. Eli laughed. I know.
John says night vision goggles on there. Yeah. I thought that was good.
Becky, go play with your kids. Yep.
Yeah, I do like this camp.